Good evening, welcome to the Gray Town Council Workshop of October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll begin with roll call. Counselor Gass?
Present.
Counselor McGuire?
Present.
Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor Height?
Here.
And I'm Counselor Chapel, and to my right is interim town manager Josh Tiffany. This workshop, we'll be discussing a meeting that two of us had with the MDOT and our, I guess principal wasn't there, but it was mainly with the MDOT and our legislative representatives for the state. So we'll be reporting out on that, and then we'll be revisiting some priorities for ordinance work through the next year. We talked about those at our retreat, but we've been having a lot of feedback from residents and businesses in town on things that are kind of waiting in the wings, so we just want to identify some ordinance work that is realistic to complete within the next twelve months. Anne was kind enough to type up her notes from yesterday. Anne, do you want, she shared those with us in hard copy here. Do you want to go over that? Or do you want, I'm happy, I took notes, but I didn't type them, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, and feel free to chime in, Krista, if I missed anything.
Sure.
And I'm sure I did. There was a productive meeting, I thought, and, you know, I'm going to lead with the bad news, which is that it doesn't appear that we're going to make the deadline for the Raze Grant. And the Raze Grant is a federal USDOT private transportation grant that we're hoping to get because it could help pay eighty percent of the cost of the transformation in the village that we're looking to do. So obviously, a huge burden lifted from taxpayers and an opportunity for us to make the changes that we think need to get made. And that a lot of residents participated in identifying, around two hundred of them last summer, a year ago, in twenty-two.
That is a cyclical grant, though, so we're not making this round, but we hope to make the next one.
Yeah, it's not our last shot at this by any means. It will delay things some. It looks as though USDOT will release that grant in November of this year, and it'll probably be due in February. And we're just, we just don't have the design nailed down yet. And we don't even have an MOU memorandum of understanding with Maine DOT around this work. And we've been negotiating that for about six months now, so we're hoping to get that off the table and done. So, you know, but I think really the good news is that everybody agrees this is a project that needs to happen and wants to see it happen. And just, and so yesterday's meeting was kind of an opportunity to say, okay, what is it that we need to do in order to move this along? The two intersections in Gray Village are still a sticking point. They kind of have been all along, but we're closer. We're much closer than we were before, and I think there's opportunity for more movement. Dale Doughty, who's the planning director for Maine DOT, needed to go back and check on some things with some other people in his shop, so that might allow us to do what Principal Group has designed for. Principal Group is our consultant that we've hired to help us with this planning process and design process. And so we're hoping that that new information will help us move ahead with the planned improvements to the intersection that is, you know, the road coming in from, one fifteen really coming in from the highway and going along the Armith Road and where it intersects with Main Street, which is a nightmare pretty much for everybody, whether you know the terrain or not. So that was good to hear. The other intersection at Brown Street and Shaker Road is also in play. I mean, they have made changes to their initial plan, DOT has. And they've, you know, we're not quite aligned on that, but getting closer. So we're hoping, we will definitely have more discussions on that and see if we can push that a little bit further. Still, other things that are still kind of unresolved are, we've done, the council has done and the staff, a ton of work on Armith Road from Main Street up to just past Apple Tree Village. And that is a road that badly needs reconstruction because there's terrible stormwater problems there, drainage, and the road surface is pretty cruddy. But there are, and it's a difficult road in some ways because there's a very narrow right-of-way. And people's, some people's properties, it comes pretty close to the road. So there's some difference of, the town of Gray would like to see a sixty-foot right-of-way, and that's basically the edge-to-edge of the road. And DOT was thinking.
Sixty-foot right-of-way wouldn't be edge-to-edge of the road.
Oh, okay. It would be.
It would allow for stormwater and other things, but the road won't be that wide.
That, yeah, that's right. The road will be that wide. That's absolutely accurate.
Didn't want to scare anybody out.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. We're not planning on putting a boulevard.
If there's a four-lane highway.
Thank you for that correction, yes. I stand corrected. And, but, you know, DOT is thinking more of like a, taking more land, like a sixty-six-foot right-of-way, which, again, won't make the road wider, but I guess in their view, you know, holds the door open for future improvements that might need to get made. But they seem to be willing to talk about that, so that's still in play.
Yeah, I think, I think they were saying they were open to customizing based on each property how much they take. That was the impression.
Which is what we've proposed to do in the current plan.
Right, right.
I mean, there's literally not sixty feet between some of the houses.
Right.
Right. I mean, it's got to be narrower. So, I mean, we're not going to take people's, the edge of corners of people's houses in order to accommodate that wider right-of-way. But, and there was some confusion along the way about whether or not the Gray Water District needed to move its water pipes on Armith Road. That, you know, and at first Maine DOT was saying, yes, they have to because, you know, we need the room for our stormwater drainage or something like that. And then they've since backed off that position and said, actually, we can figure out a way to not have to mess with the water pipes. But the Water District has said that because of what they expect to be future development in East Gray along Armith Road, there's already pressure there. While the road is open, it's the cheapest way to do it is to upgrade those pipes and be in a position to accommodate future growth. If it takes five years or twenty-five years, you know, or fifty years, it'll, they'll be there and they won't have to open up the road to do that again. So that really is the most sort of cost-effective way to proceed, and they seem willing to discuss that.
Were they in the room?
No, not at this meeting, no. But I've been in touch with them a couple times, and I know Doug has been as well, although.
And I, the DOT was also indicating that they might have, I think, we were thinking in order to accommodate the sixteen-inch pipe that they want, the Gray Water District wants to add, that we were going to have to move it. But I think that the DOT was indicating they might have a workaround for that, but they haven't really indicated what that is yet, so.
It was the storm drain upgrades that were getting.
Right. Yeah, we added storm drainage on the north side of the road that wasn't there originally, which was interfering with that existing twelve-inch pipe. And then, so then they were needing to move it, and while we thought they were going to move it, they wanted to upgrade it. But, yeah, I don't, I think that the Gray Water District is indicating that they still would like to upgrade that pipe since we'll be in the road, but perhaps we won't need to move its location, which according to the DOT.
The one thing I think is, I'll keep pushing it anyways, I think every time you get in the room with any of these groups, there is a well-established standards for putting utilities underground that we have not followed.
Yeah.
And we have to make that correction with this change so that in the event that something has to be done later, it can be done without it being really expensive or us having to redo it.
And whose standards are those? Are those?
I don't have, I don't have it chapter verse, but I'll find out for you.
Okay, that would be helpful to know. And the rationale, I mean, the rationale for that is just because everybody understands that's the standard and it's easier.
Yeah, sort of, all the utilities are kind of in their own lane.
Yeah, okay.
So whether it's water or gas or electric or sewer, exactly, which, you know, is something that we definitely need. Someone someday will have to plan for.
Yep. Okay, thank you. I made a note of that. And Gray Water District will be invited to future meetings. I will make sure they're at the table going forward. The on-street parking issues are not fully resolved yet. Maine DOT doesn't believe that in the design that Principal Group put together, it's going to gain us that many spaces, and it'll be, I don't know, if it's, you know, what their concern is that it'll be a nuisance or a problem with traffic. I think we can, I think they weren't, they didn't seem to be digging their heels in entirely and things like that. I think that's a negotiable point we can.
I think they were definitely open to on-street parking towards, kind of near Town Hall here and the subway, but they were a little bit more concerned about it up towards the one fifteen intersection where the Gray Historical Society is. But I agree, Anne, that they were not digging their heels in about it when you mentioned it a few times.
Do you have a question?
Nope, sorry.
And we're also trying to preserve the option of burying utilities. And that would be, I think we're thinking like the intersection of one fifteen and Armith Road on Main Street to, you know, a little past Pendle is kind of what we're talking about. That's an expensive, you know, want as opposed to a need, but it is transformative when it happens. And we have utility poles in the middle of sidewalks in the village, in the middle of narrow sidewalks, which makes, you know, walking, or especially if you're mobility impaired, you know, and are using a rolling walker or a wheelchair, it makes it impossible to use a sidewalk. So we'll, you know, those, of course, could be relocated, but we're going to need to involve the CMP on that one, I think, pretty quick. And so I'm going to make a note of that as well.
Yeah, the legislative team in the room, particularly Teresa Purse, was encouraging us to be all-inclusive of the things we want ideally, and then we can always scale it back if necessary, when we get feedback from wherever we're applying to.
The Principal Group did.
Presumably Spectrum has wires on those poles too.
What's that?
I said presumably Spectrum and what other communication company might have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do, those are on those poles.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. Let's see. And, you know, Dale, Dale Doughty kept sort of presenting like there were, he seems to like these sort of bipolar options. Or, you know, there was going with planning or going with the project management. The project management is, if we go with the project management, it means essentially adopting the plan that DOT has modified from their original, the one that we looked at yesterday, and maybe making some small tweaks to it, but not necessarily getting closer to what we want. And the alternative, that helps us move along faster, but if we're not proceeding toward a very, you know, up-and-coming Raze Grant deadline, then we have a little bit more time. And the consensus seemed to be to go back to Dale's shop, which is, he's the planning director, and, you know, spend the time to do the engineering and get these things right. And so that's, I think that's kind of the direction we're heading in at this point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're satisfied with their drawings, their renderings currently. I think we would still like to make some changes that better align with what we've come up with with the Principal Group. And I think going back to their, the DOT Planning Department was Dale's suggestion for that. But my understanding was the two options he presented, either way, it was going, it was going to add to the timeline, and we wouldn't be able to make the current Raze Grant deadline.
One thing the Principal Group did say to us, because there is a huge expense with the underground utilities, electric, is that they've employed in the past is that they have put the utilities behind the buildings that run along Main Street as a Plan B. It's not an ideal solution, but it kind of gets you, you know, that cleaner thoroughfare through town.
Right. I think, I think we do, as a council, though, need to decide on which tack we're taking sooner rather than later because I believe that Goral Palmer is going to be needing to do that assessment in order to approve these plans, which is what the DOT is looking to do. I think, I got the sense from the DOT, they were hoping to nail this down within the month or so.
I mean, I'm all in on trying to bury the electric utility utilities, but I don't, what I don't want to do is have a plan that's so inflexible that if something comes up, we can't implement Plan B.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I hadn't actually heard of that. I had forgotten that Principal Group had suggested putting the utilities, so still on poles, but behind the Main Street.
Right, because their suggestion is to create kind of a network of alleyways
Yeah.
and through existing trails and other properties that we would hope to build out after the infrastructure's in place. So, yeah, the, ideally, the utilities, if they couldn't be buried, would go in what they're calling alleys.
Yeah, that makes sense. So that's a great Plan B if we can't do the, do the burying. And so, let's see, where are we in my notes here? Oh, the MOU that we, you know, we last sent the MOU with our edits to Maine DOT in early August. And we sort of nudged them several times, and we keep hearing it's illegal. From my experience in state government, things that go into legal can sometimes take a while to come out, depending on what the other priorities are. But sometimes moving the, you know, who defines the priorities can matter too. And I think, so I, you know, we pressed him again, Dale, about, you know, the MOU, and he said that it would need to reflect, the changes would need to be reflected in there of coming back to planning and kind of that kind of stuff. What that exactly means, we didn't get a chance to get into. But he, I asked him, so is this at the bottom of your priority list or legal's priority list? And if it is, you know, what do we need to do to get it back to the top? And he said he'd move it along.
He did say he would bump it up. He also indicated that once we have an MOU, we will also need to pass a resolution with agreement, not, I think, not just an MOU, but we're going to have to have a resolution as a council.
Right.
What is the, do we know when the next round of Raze Grants might be?
That's a good question. The, what he's been hearing, what Dale has been hearing is that USDOT is thinking of releasing another, they're called a Notice of Funding Opportunity, a NOFO. And including in that NOFO, usually, or often what happens with the feds is they'll release one NOFO for a program, and there'll be a set deadline. And then the next year, they'll release the NOFO with some tweaks and set a deadline. But what they can also do, and I do a lot of federal grant writing, so I've seen this happen, is that they'll say, okay, we're going to release this NOFO, but we're going to set deadlines for, you know, spring and fall or, you know, for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six or some, you know, they can, they can add years to that. So I think that's what's going to happen. And he's thinking, you know, the scuttlebutt is that's what's going to happen to the Raze Grant next. And that DOT is going to want to just try and reduce their administrative load by putting out one NOFO that can cover multiple deadlines.
Yeah, what was the woman's name from DOT? Megan?
Megan, yeah, Megan Russo, yeah.
Yeah, she did say that in February of every year, the state DOT goes down to the federal delegation to present projects that are essentially shovel-ready. She did not think this project would be ready for February of twenty-four, but she was anticipating presenting it in February of twenty-five to hopefully advocate for those, the funding in two thousand and twenty-five. I think that Dale and Megan both don't have an exact timeline for the subsequent deadline because it's really dependent on when the federal government decides to release those funds.
Is there any recognition on their part that they're the ones that are kind of holding up the works?
I don't believe they would see it, they would say they see it that way. Yeah, yeah. You know, so, enough said. I mean, I think, you know, the council was busy with the budget up until June. The budget failed. We were then busy with trying to figure out how to pass the budget. And that was time that could have been put towards this project and wasn't. And that's, I mean, that's kind of the way I look at it. There was perhaps fault all the way along, you know, around, but I'm not pointing fingers, and I don't think it's productive to do at this point. I think we just move forward.
I think, yeah, there were some communication delays on both ends, and we, yeah, but this meeting yesterday was very productive, and I think they're ready to move along as are, and we certainly are.
Yeah, but we're talking about a whole nother year.
Yeah, it's very frustrating.
I, I am very aware. That was the one disappointing aspect from yesterday.
I mean, not that we can do anything about it, but.
I mean, we just simply cannot.
I don't see how we're going to keep from missing the next one.
Right. And, well, I'm hoping we can once we get this MOU in place and the planning baked. I forgot my train of thought. But, yeah, I was, overall, I had, I had a positive impression from the meeting yesterday. And I, I think we both made the point of what, you know, perhaps we can make progress on smaller things before this larger construction project, which would now probably be in two thousand and twenty-nine. And one of the first things they're doing is they've separated the northern part of Route one hundred from Way Nav to New Gloucester as a separate project. And I think that that construction will begin within the next year or year and a half.
Yeah, good point. So I was pleased that when we were looking at their new design, the new version of their design, that they, one of the things we discussed and Principal Group was helpful in pointing this out in back when we did the charrette in the summer of twenty-two, is that, you know, really, it's the way, the entrance from the, from the turnpike interchange into the village along one fifteen there, the way it is now, there's almost, there's sort of little substantive difference between the signage on the turnpike and the signage on that road, on the road into the village. And we need to, you know, do some treatments to signal drivers that they're coming into a village. Because if they're unfamiliar with it, how would they know? And, and so they seem willing to, they call that sort of gateway treatment, so they seem willing to do that. So I was, I was pleased with that.
Yeah, I quoted, I wrote down exactly what he said because I wanted it written down. He said, "There are design elements from Principal we can implement in regards to gateway treatments." So things like speed tables, street parking, crosswalks, and also the narrowed roadway. He confirmed that they did have an eleven-foot roadway in their designs.
Yeah, we did want to take down the big gantry as you come up the hill into the village.
Yes, exactly, yeah. Yeah, and eleven-foot travel lanes are what Principal Group designed as well. So that we're aligned on that. We have agreement. And so that's good. And they seemed, you know, I don't know if you've been on Stevens Avenue in Portland, but they have these, these sort of speed tables, I guess they're called. And, and that's kind of what they have in mind for Main Street and Gray Village. So that's, I think that's really helpful and will help to slow traffic down.
They were not open to a fifteen mile per hour speed limit, though. But they, they did see space for potentially having a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit directly in the village here.
Yeah, and so that, that's good news. I mean, apparently Senator Purse was saying that in all the towns that she serves as Senator, that none of them has a speed limit lower than thirty through their villages. And so, you know, we haven't inked the deal with MDOT, but they, they seem willing to consider a twenty-five mile per hour. Currently, it's thirty-five. Is that right?
Well, it's thirty right here, right in front of Town Hall and the main part of the village, and it's thirty-five on Short Shaker.
Right.
They should, they should use their own reference information regarding pedestrian injuries and speed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which they put out.
That's right. I mean, the faster you go.
Even at twenty miles an hour, the fatality rate for pedestrians is still pretty high.
Yeah, and at thirty-five, it's really high.
Yeah.
Another piece of really good news, potentially, is that some or all of the town's costs in acquiring right-of-ways from properties that might be affected by the, by the roadwork could go towards our match for the Raze Grant. The way the Raze Grant would work is that the feds would pay eighty percent of the total cost. MDOT would pay ten, or the state would pay ten, and then we would pay ten percent. And so if we can use the right-of-way acquisitions as part of that match, that would be really significant.
They did note for that, though, that if we acquired properties for that, they would have to be specifically for transportation purposes. So we couldn't acquire properties and then do something else with it that wasn't impacting roadway, so.
For economic development.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. And also, I mean, I think if they judged that it wasn't critical for transportation, that's kind of what I heard Dale say. Like, if they didn't think, if we thought it was necessary for transportation and they didn't think so, they might not count that, but.
But why that's important also is because these South Gray TIF, which is holding the funds that we would use for a match, expires in two thousand and twenty-eight, and they were, they did say that they would be willing to, what did they call it?
Pre-bill us.
Pre-bill us, yes, for some of the costs. And they were considering land acquisition purposes as potentially some of those pre-billed costs.
I think we would be allowed to extend that TIF one more time if I remember correctly, but it would be nice if we didn't have to.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll be able to, we'll know more in time to make that decision, but it is something, it is a ball we need to keep our eye on, for sure.
Dale did say that we would need a second MOU. Do you recall him saying that? So once, so we would have a first MOU basically in support of applying for this grant. And then once the grant is approved, we would need a second MOU for the actual work. And so that pre-billing portion would come as part of the second memorandum of ours.
That makes sense, because you, yeah, you wouldn't do the construction one if you're not going to be sure you got the money.
Yeah. Okay, and let's see. And just one more thing on, excuse me, on that grant, is it, is it, Senator Collins is, I think she's the senior Senate Republican leader?
Appropriations.
On appropriations, yeah. And so she has considerable power there. And so I, you know, they seem hopeful, you know, there's, there's always question, this money could disappear depending on what happens with the elections in two thousand and twenty-four in Congress and what, you know, what else is happening in the economy. I mean, the money could, if not disappear completely, it could be reduced from current levels. So we, there just are a lot of unknowns, but at least we have, you know, as our senators are well-placed to. And also Senator Pingree, I mean, sorry, Representative Pingree sits on appropriations in the House. So we have some muscle in Congress, which I think will be helpful for us going forward.
There is a pedal highway running through the village, so it's not, you know, there isn't a complete disconnect there.
No, not a bit. Yeah, it's, and Senator Collins, we were told, really likes villages. She's really concerned, I think she's been hearing from her constituents all over Maine that people want their villages back. And so she seems inclined to focus on, on funding that'll help make that happen. And there are other, you know, I don't, there are other, I've been keeping my eye on some other grant, federal grant programs through USDOT. And, you know, I haven't delved into them a lot, but there may be some other options as well, as Krista said, to sort of pick off pieces that we can do. And so just a couple other things. Dale suggested making Brown Street, we were talking about the difficulty of the, or the challenges in the intersection between Short Shaker Road and across to Brown Street by the McDonald's there. And he said, "Well, what if we closed Brown Street or make it one-way?" And we had looked at that years ago, and we're told that it was infeasible. Goral Palmer, Tom Goral, I think, had done that analysis. And it was, it's a problem with stacking the cars. So that's the kind of thing MDOT could go back and do as we're making improvements to these intersections, perhaps, and upgrading the lights. The traffic lights will be upgraded to smart lights that are hopefully easier to program than our current ones. So, you know, with the improvements of the village, to the, to the village intersections, it may be that we can consider, you know, closing or making Brown Street one-way. We'll have to look at that some more, and that's part of what would have, you know, part of the design work that he would do back in planning.
And you were talking about closing it to motor vehicles. You know, there would still be a transportation function there for, you know, pedestrians and bicycles.
Yeah, and existing, you know, like the church has the parish house there and a parking lot. I mean, but they could enter from the other direction, and it would.
It would be kind of, I think his idea would be that it was a dead-end street.
Dead-end street, exactly.
Yeah.
And so that's all, this is all very hypothetical at the moment. You know, we would certainly have conversations with the property owners along Brown Street before we, you know, it's. uh, it, it, you know, as we sort of moved through that uh discussion with MDOT, but um, I just wanted to be transparent, but that's, you know, that's, that was one of the things we discussed.
I think his main reason for um that idea was because we, we were trying to tee up that, that intersection and also the one at one fifteen by, well, at the one up Brown Street and Short Shaker, we needed to move the, the Civil War Monument in order to accomplish the teeing up, but the, that was one of the other sticking points the DOT had, was that they were concerned about touching that monument, because it's already been moved a couple times at the expense of the DOT, um, and it has a historic um, um, just designation, um, and I guess if they were to move it again, they would have to justify that to the federal government um, once again, and they were concerned about the process involved in that. Um, so if we don't move the monument, it would be more difficult to tee up that intersection, so that was the idea behind potentially making Brown Street one-way or closing it.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it would, it would save us having to move the monument, which might be a good thing. Uh, so, and then just lastly, there was some willingness, uh, Senator Purce had brought this up, that to explore other funding options so that we could maybe get, peel off Yarmouth Road, which is a project that, you know, we've done a terrific amount of work on over several years, and the residents are very anxious and eager to, to have the project move forward. And disappoint, they were disappointed when we lumped it in with the rest of the village and, and wanted to go after a Raze grant, so if there's a way to make that project happen earlier, um, you know, that's something we can look at, and Senator Purce was gonna um look into that a little bit more for us.
The one caveat with that, though, is I think it would make our Raze grant less competitive, because it doesn't encompass a larger area of town.
Yeah, could be, I don't know.
That was the reason why we combined them to begin with.
Yeah, although it's, you know, it's unclear to me, the Raze grant, um, I looked at the guidelines in some detail, and there's a maximum grant amount of twenty-five million dollars per community.
That's the eighty percent cost, though.
Is it?
I, I believe so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was twenty-five million that the federal government.
Yeah, but even if that's true, if our, if our total development costs are thirty-three million or, or climbing, as they have over the last several years, and we don't get to this till twenty-nine, I mean, they may very well increase that, that cap, but um, we may, you know, and be in a position where we, we have to cough up some more money, and so at that point, I, I still think you can make a case for um, you know, the Main Street improvements being part of a larger plan that we've been executing over several years, and, and there's a story you can tell about that, but I'm not the expert on the Raze grant, so it's certainly something we would look at, and in the context of. Yeah, we'd be, I, you know, I think there's some definite wins in the community, I mean, this is, Yarmouth Road needs to get done, and, and the residents are are ready and willing, and we've done a ton of work, you know, so it would be nice to maintain that momentum. So on, on tomorrow, Josh and Doug and Vanessa, um, far from principal group and I are gonna meet just to sort of sync up and, and make sure we're, we're on top of the to-do list, and um, and then on, that's planned, um, currently planned for the, I, this is still a little bit tentative, but October twenty-seventh, on the morning of twenty, October twenty-seventh, the sort of gray side of the design team, um, so that would include Goral Palmer, the Graywater District staff. Uh, Krista and myself will meet to just kind of really hash through the, the um designs from uh principal group and, and DOT and sort of, uh, you know, sort of compare them and, and try to make, try to figure out how we can move this thing forward, and then follow up with a technical design meeting with MDOT on November second. Um, so that's the, those are, again, the dates are a little tentative, but you can see that we're trying to move this conversation along and not wait for weeks and weeks between meetings and, and, and try to push this along, so we'll, uh, waiting to hear back from DOT on whether or not they can, they, they have room in their schedules for that November second meeting, but that's, that's the current plan.
Did you get a sense from the DOT, because I can't, I can't recall, what, what their intention was when we meet with them again on November second? Will they have, I think they will have revised plans, isn't that?
You know, I'm, I'm not hundred percent, hundred percent certain of that, and I, I think Dale will tell us if he's not ready. I mean, I, I, that's what I'm suspecting will happen, is they'll say, "I want to work on this more before I bring it back," but um, I, I, I really, um, I think I, I would like to see the conversations continue, because every time we let weeks and months go by, we, we lose momentum, and so even if we don't, even if we have to follow up with another meeting, I think it's worth it to, to keep the progress going. I, you know, identify the commonalities where we can, and then shrink the to-do, you know, the, the, well, we need a massage list, um, you know, down to, um, you know, just a few things, and so I think we can make headway even without any, you know, the, the updated plans from, from MDOT, and it might help inform their decision-making around their planning.
Does anyone have, I know that was a lot to take in.
Yeah.
We, we, I, we met with them for almost two hours yesterday, so it was, it was productive. Um, does anyone have any follow-up questions or concerns?
Just be curious when the, when the next meetings are, when the dates get.
Okay.
That gateway idea seems like it's a good idea.
The, the gateway, gateway treatments.
The transition from the interstate into the village.
Yeah, they were talking about doing that um upon exiting the turnpike approaching the village, um, and then also on the north side of town, Route one hundred, was, was where they were thinking this would be most appropriate.
I just, I guess I would say that this, this is is very refreshing to hear, it sounds like a constructive dialogue we're engaged in now, which I guess, you know, reports up till now didn't, you know, didn't sound all that constructive, and, and so I'm really glad that that you and Ann are, are engaging in this process, and I think.
It does, I, it does feel like we're making progress instead of just being stalled over emails, so.
Yeah.
And that's really thanks to a lot of Ann's work, so I was just present yesterday. Okay.
Appreciate, Krista's back up too, though, and Doug and Josh's. Josh, have you missed anything from your perspective?
The only thing I would say is that, you said the link during, was the link distributed that they sent for the traffic accident mapping?
Uh, I, I thought I did, but perhaps I didn't, I um.
There was, and one of the things the MDOT did was supply, or Sheriff's Department supplied a link to the number of accidents that occur anywhere on a map. And it is fascinating, and I think that is the best evidence you can see for the need to redesign the village center.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna speak to that in my, in my council.
Sorry.
No, no, it's fine, because I, I, I did play around with it, and, and you can, you can search by, by, you know, years, or by area of town, or both, and, and yeah, and over a ten, from twenty thirteen, there were two hundred and thirteen, or something like that, acts, you know, traffic accidents in Gray, and of, of those, about twenty-seven or eight were in the village.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to give us some space to revisit, um, not our, not our core goals, which included getting this infrastructure work underway, improving our budget processes, improving communications with residents, and also implementing um ordinance work related to LD two thousand and three in the comp plan. And those were the core goals we identified at our retreat. Um, but I'd like to revisit some of the kind of um up-in-the-air ordinance work that we've discussed with residents, and identify at least maybe two or three things we think we can realistically accomplish in the next twelve months, um, because we've been getting a lot of feedback about our progress on those, or lack thereof. Um, so just to refresh everyone's memory, uh, we had, a lot of our priority areas were related to the village, and that's not what I'm talking about, but there are design standards we were talking about doing um to address any changes we need in the village, and sub, and also complimentary to that uh, a potential moratorium on residential development, um, while we work on design standards and our zoning needs in the village. Uh, the Libby Hill Road upgrade is in process, um, and kind of dependent on funding from the federal government, so I'm gonna leave that one on the table. The self-storage ordinance, uh, hoping we will wrap up tonight. We also had talked about doing a pop-up commercial business ordinance to support um experimental, like food truck, and creating the type of development in the village we would hope to see ultimately after the infrastructure work's done. Um, we don't have any ordinances currently that would allow for um, kind of like a food truck park or something like that. Um, we also uh had met with the Lakes Associations, probably going on, yep, two years, according to this document, two years ago, to talk about implementing some water quality um standards around the shoreline, um modeled potentially after ordinances that already exist in Falmouth and Wyndham. There's also um the road standards that we need to address, um, the properties around Deer Acres um, on the other side of Little Sebago Lake are very concerned about um their road being a cut-through, it's currently a private road, um, but the standards um need to be addressed on that road, and also, and our complimentary ordinances need to be looked at.
I do have an update on that one.
Okay.
To council correspondence.
Okay. Um, we also are going to look at our um traffic and parking ordinances. Um, and then one we've been hearing a lot about lately is our existing ordinances for cannabis, and our lack of retail options for both medical and retail, um, recreational cannabis. And I think that was, I think that's all, oh, no, the other one was um mooring ordinance also. So those are the ones that keep coming up. Um, I think we can address some of these. I did reach out to uh GP Cog regarding the shoreline water quality ordinance recently, um, because we had discussed doing that in the past, and I'm not sure we ever had the opportunity to follow up. I had a conversation with Christina Egan about it, she said that there is space in their planning department to work on that, kind of lead that process for us as part of our member dues, so we could kind of, that would be one we could potentially hand off, especially since there are existing ordinances in Falmouth and Wyndham that we could model off of, and it wouldn't be too much of a heavy lift for them, so if people are comfortable with that, that could be one that we could identify as completing and also get some assistance with.
That's the mooring ordinance?
No, that's the shoreline, water quality.
Water quality, okay, yeah, sorry.
So I'd just be curious to hear from others, um, of the ones I listed, aside from that one, since we can, we have capacity elsewhere to address that. Um, what folks would really like to see addressed in the next year, given the feedback we've been receiving from residents and community.
I, I, if I could just ask, um, on the water quality ordinance, and have you talked to, has Doug been involved in?
No, I need to touch base with Doug on that, yeah.
How that's gonna mesh with our planning department, what work GP Cog.
Yeah, so I'm, I don't know, Doug, if you wouldn't mind, could you come up? Um, yeah, I'm not, I haven't, I haven't been on the council when we've handed ordinance work over to them before, so I'm not sure exactly the process, but I would, I would imagine that they would develop the language um in coordination with planning, and then we would present it and vote on it, just as we would any other.
Yeah, we'd set the parameters.
Right, yeah. Do you, have you, have you been involved with GP Cog staff and um assisting with, having them assist with ordinance changes or work in the past?
Um, Doug Webster, Planning Director. The last time we used GP Cog was for the inventory chapters for the comp plan.
Oh, okay.
Uh, there was some discussion at one point about a grant that GP Cog was gonna get. Uh, prior manager Rudy and I met for lunch, but that grant didn't come through. Typically, such work is, if it's phosphorus, a lot of times municipalities lean on Cumberland County, I think GP Cog could coordinate it. Before work's done on that, it should probably, if it's going to work, there need to be a set of relatively easily understood prescriptive standards that can be applied by the code officers. It's not gonna do any good to say, as a practical matter to residents, here their performance standards, go hire an engineer. Uh, and I know from being Falmouth's prior assistant code officer that they do have, they used to have anyway, uh, prescriptive standards. So the, usually the model is to say, here's some prescriptive standards, you can follow these, or if you don't agree with these, you can go get your own engineer.
Okay. You had a thought, Dan?
Well, we, you know, clearly we share Little Sebago with Wyndham, and I haven't, I haven't downloaded or read their ordinance yet, but apparently they've updated theirs to include these issues. That's not to say that we should just accept, you know, accept that chapter and verse, but it is one lake, so it does make sense to me to something, that you'd have the same standards.
Right.
But then we have the other lakes which are in town, and so I don't know how transferable that would be, because I don't, I think that we should write an ordinance that will address all of the water bodies in Gray, not, not just Little Sebago.
And I think that's what the lakes want also.
Yes, they do.
The Lake of Sociality do want that. I, I'll just note that I worked with GP Cog on the, um, when I was doing the Bike Ped Committee on the Complete Streets Ordinance, and they did come up with a first draft, uh, and I did quite a bit of editing to that, and, and then I think it sat for a while. I think there might have been a pandemic that, you know, delayed things, uh, and so eventually we kind of got back to it, but it was a, it was a very collegial experience, they were receptive to our edits and, and were, were willing to just turn it over to us at a certain point when we were ready to take it on, so um, I, I, I feel like that's a really good solution, and the water quality thing is important, we, we, the lakes, um, you know, in addition to being, you know, important for habitat, they, they bring in a lot of revenue um to the town from property taxes and, and from visitors who come and use them, uh, you know, use the boat ramps and stuff, so I, I think, um, I think it's important to pay attention to the water quality, because I, last I heard, I, I may be misremembering this, but didn't I hear that every lake in Gray is, you know, at something less than optimum water quality, do I, am I, am I just making that up? I'm sorry.
Many years ago, the DEP classified virtually all lakes in Southern Maine as most at risk from development, and so I've got my own perspective on, I mean, I don't think that adds a lot of credibility if you classify all the lakes that way.
Yeah.
Uh, but there, there are ways to quantify the sensitivity based on the flushing rate, based on the soils, based on existing development, based upon a development potential, and usually what that translates to is the phosphorus pounds per acre, and that's utilized, that's the basis for applying the intensity, if you will, of the water quality standards.
And I, I'll just note that, that my family has a camp over on Panther Pond, near Camp Hines, and um, I, we've really seen the water quality degrade over the last, you know, ten to twenty years, and, and it's different lake, not in Gray, but I, I, I think it's also from development, and, and so it just, it's important to think about.
Yeah, and it's also one of the older things that have been sitting on our list, so I, I think, um, I'm hoping that will assist with our capacity to address that, and Doug, I'll certainly loop you in with the emails that I'm having with Christina. Um, okay, so let's, um, I don't, I don't wanna go through the list again, but did anyone have any thoughts on things, priorities that they would like to see addressed in the next twelve months?
What's that, what's that road up there?
Deer Acres?
Deer Acres, that's gotta be dealt with.
Yeah.
It's a private road, it's narrow and windy and.
Well, it, it doesn't actually, I mean, no, don't mean to interrupt, but it's, it's not a town road.
Right.
It's a private road.
They, they would, I believe they're, they still would like it to be, but I have a lot of questions for them. They're in the process of doing a lot of designing, and actually, it sounds like they're actually gonna do some construction, so I'm a little confused as to what they're looking for, so I asked them, I've asked them to sort of clarify what their request to us is at this point, Doug.
Okay, so it sounds like maybe that is not something that's realistic in the next.
So, well, I think, I think the discussion in general is, because it keeps coming up at planning board meetings, so it, you know, not anything that we hear of here, but.
You're talking about the road standards?
Road standards, I mean, Eagles Nest Road, the planning board got a letter from them wanting their road to be uh, accepted by the town. Every subdivision or amended subdivision generates this conversation. So it is bigger than just Deer Acres. And road standards in general came up again last night with the Stillwater Pines, development up. up here on Woodcock.
I mean, personally, I do think road standards are complimentary to the infrastructure work we're also trying to accomplish, so I would be okay with...
So these are standards that would be in place that would allow us to take over a private road?
It's, it, there are standards now, but they're very narrow. If the road isn't a connector, if the road doesn't solve a problem for the town, then the town is not likely to accept that road.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I'm not sure that I want to revisit that, that position, actually, you know, accepting roads. I sort of favor the idea that we wouldn't be accepting roads if it wasn't sort of solving a problem for the town.
I think there are some other issues, though, because we also prescribe, for instance, that a subdivision that's built, has to be built to town standards where the road has to be paved. Certain other things have to be followed that the town dictates to a subdivision, but then refuses to accept the road. A paved road is a very expensive proposition to maintain. So, you know, in my mind, I think we need to have a discussion about, if we're going to demand that people meet certain standards, then I guess we have to, but we're not willing to follow up and help with the maintenance of that in the future. I guess I have some questions about, are we, do we have the right standards? Do we have the right set of expectations? And I think there are things that we can do that we've talked about in broad terms. Right now, we have the winter maintenance ordinance, which allows these roads, if they're designed correctly and maintained, to get snow plowing in the winter. But I think that there are other things that we could do that wouldn't cause the town a lot of additional expense, but could help these smaller communities maintain the roads that we require they build.
Well, I mean, we're not requiring them to build a road. This is a developer applying to develop something, and we're saying, the road is going to be built to a certain standard, right?
That's our requirement, yes.
Yeah. We're not telling them they have to build a road, they're, they're building a road to make money.
Yes, but then the HOA is responsible for the road after the fact.
Yes, right. But we didn't make anyone build a road, is I guess the point.
And the issue is paving the road, right? Isn't that primarily?
Yeah, there's different standards there that you can require people to build to, I guess, and so that's, that's, yeah.
I'd be in favor of revisiting it, just simply from the standpoint of, you know, looking at that paving requirement. I think there are options that are less expensive and less expensive to maintain over time. But Doug, you look like you're...
I just wanted to respectfully suggest that there's an important distinction between accepting for winter maintenance and full acceptance, and there are, there are major differences, particularly long-term budgetary.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we're just looking at the time, so we've got about four minutes here. The other ones I mentioned were the mooring ordinance, cannabis, the pop-up, pop-up commercial business one, and then the design standards in the village, and then the pending moratorium. So...
The pop-up one was one that the council generated? I've not had anyone ever approach me about that.
I, I think that's an easy no for me.
I think that one, I would say, take off the list, yeah.
Basically, from my perception of what I'm receiving, it seems like the marijuana ordinance ought to be prioritized.
Doug, sorry, you just sat down. That was also my sense. I, I don't know, we have three of us, we're going that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which one, I'm sorry?
The cannabis.
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 Or, sorry. So we've identified three things. I really think, I know, I know mooring is important, I know other things are important, and I'm not saying any of these are less important than the other, but I think realistically, what can we accomplish as council? We've identified the Shoreland Water Quality with help from GP Cog, design standards for roads, and cannabis. So Doug, your team would be leading potentially two out of three of those. Do you, do you feel you have capacity in the next 12 months to work on that, given everything else you're juggling with LD 03, the comp plan, infrastructure? And I know Kristin's working on a multitude of things also.
I would respectfully submit to the council that the cannabis is arguably as complex as roads, and in some prior messages, I, and I believe, I'm trying to think who was here, maybe Councilor McGuire, but there was a, there was a separate committee, it's very, how do I say this, more, something more tangible, the ladder truck. There was a separate committee that was formed, they came up with, okay, we want a ladder truck, we're willing to spend up to this much money, and once those policy decisions were made, the drafting of the ordinance is not the time-consuming part. The time-consuming part is getting consensus on what the changes are going to be. And so I would advocate that the council consider forming a separate committee to go off, so to speak, in their own corner and arrive at a consensus for what the changes should or should not be. Drafting them up after that point, after there's consensus between amongst the council, is not that heavy a lift, and that would free up, if you will, Kristin and me if we're going to be doing these other things and have, I hope that's enough of an explanation.
No, I think that's really helpful, and I get the sense that there are a number of people in town who would be willing to serve on it.
Yeah, food sovereignty, that's the way we did food sovereignty as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it had a separate committee.
And that group would work directly with the council, and once there was consensus, then we draft it.
Okay. I, I would certainly be in agreement with that.
Regarding roads, yeah, I'm in agreement with that, too.
Okay.
On cannabis. But Councilor Gass mentioned revisiting the paving standard. I mean, and I just, I'm open to that also, and I'm just wondering, is there, is there some sort of more simplified, streamlined approach to that? If that's, if that's a bullet item we want to target, is there, or is there a need for a complex revisiting of, of road standards?
I don't know, go ahead, Doug.
I would just respectfully submit that before there is extensive effort put towards roads, I think there's a policy question on behalf of the council as to whether or not the council is willing to accept the long-term financial implications of additional roads. And unless and until that decision is made, it may not be prudent to explore drastic changes to the policy that was pretty well-vetted. I was part of it about 12 years ago.
But I don't think that...
Oh, go ahead, sorry. Miss, I was taking notes.
I don't think that anyone, I'm certainly not advocating for necessarily a large change in the way the town accepts roads. We did the CZA for Stillwater Pines, Woodcock, because the standard then was for, the current standard for a road in that zone was for a much larger road with more impervious and more stormwater and a variety of issues. The developer came to us and asked us to consider amending the standard so that they could build a narrower road, which ultimately the council agreed to. Now, that, that standard hasn't been codified in any ordinance. So is that something that we want to do? Is that, is that an option for future development? We haven't answered that question, I think that's part of it.
Yeah.
The other part of it, I think, is we require paving, we require striping. I think that there's an opportunity to not field to the expense for those things, for these associations, but I think there's a way that we can leverage the town's buying power to make it less expensive for the associations to get that work done than if they were to go out and try and do that work on their own.
Yeah, I think we, Doug, just, that's a good point about road acceptance. I, I think, just to begin this conversation, we should focus in on what Dan is talking about, just the standards for roads and how we might amend our policies around those. And then as we're having that conversation, perhaps we can revisit whether or not we'd like to expand the acceptance of roads. I personally, right now, if you were to ask me today, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't really be in favor of accepting more roads, I, it's huge expensive.
We can't afford it.
Right, so, but I do think it does warrant revisiting these standards so that the developments that are being built perhaps have a little more flexibility to align with, with the types of roads we want in town.
Is there any willingness on behalf of the council to look at different road standards?
I think so, yeah. That's exactly what we're talking about.
Different road standards for private subdivision roads. But not, I'm not sensing, and I certainly don't support, any move towards making it easier for us to accept private roads as town roads.
I, I think that's where we all stand today, but let's start the conversation, and perhaps we...
It's interesting that one of the first things that caused people to come together and to form towns was to build roads and bridges. There's a long tradition of local communities using their resources in order to build roads and bridges. As it's become more expensive, those folks that already live on their town-accepted roads that get them paid for them have banded together and kind of changed the rules such that anybody who develops new is stuck on their own, having to fend that cost, which used to be a community cost. Now, I'm not saying you can't change the rules, but I do think that there is, we are creating sort of a two-tiered system in the town whereby some people have an advantage of having this work done for them, while we require other people to pick up the tab to do that work on their own.
Doug, let's revisit this more at a workshop where we have time to dive in, but I think this was good, and we can certainly record our progress on all these and our intentions moving forward in our new Teams app. I can look into that. But I, but I think this was good, and we can certainly update folks who are interested in these three things we've identified going forward. So I will adjourn the workshop at 7:05 PM. We are going to take a five-minute break before we begin our full council meeting, so we will reconvene here at 7:10 PM for that. Thank you.